Let's call to order the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting Tuesday, August 18, 2020 at 6:01 PM. And can I get appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Linda and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Okay, pledge of allegiance. See everybody?
We can't hear you, no.
Okay, Linda, can you lead us? Linda, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Inga, can you see if there's somebody here for public comments?
Yeah, I believe Beth was going to address the council.
Okay, go ahead, Beth. First and last name, first and last name, and address.
My name is Beth Drew, and I reside at 8215 North Ridge Trail in Milton, the town of Milton. I just wanted to stop by tonight and introduce myself, though I know virtually everyone on this call, and just say hi and let you know that I am running for the 43rd Assembly District. And just ordinarily, I would be able to stop by with some pamphlets and some funds and so forth, but obviously, that's not a possibility. I am part of the City of Milton in that I have a small business, Small Wonders Learning Center, which is literally just down the street from City Hall. And I'm also, you may know me from the town of Milton, as a board member there and a member of the Fire Commission. And so I'm really excited to be able to kind of hang out tonight with you a little bit and be able to even hear your dialogue prior to our meeting tomorrow night. I'm very, very interested, of course, as a top of mind for me as to what we're looking at in terms of our fire station. But I know that there are other topics that are extremely important to the citizens of our municipalities, and so I invite you to reach out to me, please, if you are so inclined. I have a Facebook page, which is Beth Drew for Assembly, and also my website is BethDrewFor43.net. So please reach out if you're able, and I look forward to talking individually with you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Seth. Approval of consent agenda?
So moved.
Bill, was that you moving?
Yes.
And I saw Ryan's hand go up to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Item number six is discussion and possible action on a commercial facade grant for Nate's landscaping and snow removal located at 939 East Stores Lake Road.
So Nate Orbski, I don't know if somebody knows how to pronounce his last name, owner of Nate Landscape, Nate's Landscaping and Snow Removal, recently purchased a building on the East Stores Lake Road. I believe it is the old Right Way Building or next to the Right Way Building. Howie, do you know which one it is? You're muted, Howie.
It's the Gypsum Supply Building.
So he has recently purchased that building and wants to do some external facade improvements to that as he's going to operate his landscaping and snow removal business out of it. No, this is not Nate Rogers. It's already been asked a couple of times of Nate's, different Nate, doing landscaping, but so he is eligible for a commercial facade loan based on his location within TIF 6. He wants to redo the exterior of what he has, I believe, called the old portion of the building to have it match the new portion of the building, and has submitted the requisite application and paperwork to do so. And based on that, I know he's had some conversations with Howie as well. The city administration would recommend approval of the facade grant for Nate's landscaping at 939 East Stores Lake Road.
Okay, Teresa, any questions?
No, I don't.
Phil, questions, comments?
None.
Linda?
No, thank you.
Ryan?
No questions or comments?
Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the commercial facade grant for Nate's landscaping snow removal located at 939 East Stores Lake Road.
Devin or Larry, who was it? I couldn't...
Either one, it's fine.
Okay, Larry seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2020-23 petitioning the Office of Railroad Commissioner for a potential upgrade to the rail crossing at Putman Parkway.
So the city is potentially looking at extending a new rail spur east into the eastern portion of the Crossroads Business Park. This would be in concert with the project that the city's been working on for a couple of months now. Nothing is set in stone by any means at this point, but one of the first steps of the process is if we were to extend rail in that direction, we would need to petition the Office of Railroad Commissioner. And one of the first pieces they want is for the common council of the affected municipality to pass a resolution saying that they would support a petition if it is necessary. So it is a little bit of a chicken and the egg, but because the process does take so long to do, sometimes it can take up to eight months to go through the entire process. We want to be, put ourselves in a position to be successful if we do need to move forward with this. So the crossing that this specifically is in discussion of, there is Putman Parkway is an east-west street, and at the western end of Putman Parkway, Putman Parkway dead ends just over the railroad tracks. And based on one of the alignments that is potentially being considered, there may need to be upgrades to that crossing. As we move further in the process, it may turn out that we don't need to make any upgrades in that, but we wanted, again, to put this forward in case we needed to do that, so we didn't start the process, you know, three months from now and then be behind three months from where we are today. So by passing this resolution, it doesn't obligate the city to do anything at this point. We'll continue to investigate the needs and what may happen if rail is extended in that direction. There are some alternate alignments that have been talked about, and some of those alignments would not require any upgrades to the intersection at Putman. But again, until we've kind of gone through, further down the process, we won't know that. So we want to be proactive when we can to start this conversation. Mark Langer has been working a lot with the WSOR and in the Office of Railroad Commission to have these conversations. And we talked quite a bit on Friday and indicated that this was probably the best place to start. So Resolution 2020-23 authorizes a petition to the Office of Railroad Commission for an upgrade at Putman Parkway if it is necessary.
Okay, Larry, any questions or comments?
Oh, I have none, thank you.
Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
Ryan?
Nope.
Linda?
I think it's really important that we keep moving with our rail as much as we can. It's, it really is important to our industrial park.
Thanks, Linda. Phil?
Just a question, when and if this goes forward, what are the cost sharing arrangements? Are there dollars that are available from other sources?
Those, the cost sharing arrangement has not been kind of solidified yet, but it would be a part of the petition. If we were to file a petition, we would need to identify what those costs would be. There are alternative funding sources available through a T-grant, which is a Transportation Enhancement Act grant, which we may pursue if necessary. Otherwise, the costs could be borne completely by the developer if they so choose to go that route. TIF could pick up a portion of the funding if necessary. So those, those pieces do need to be identified when we file the petition, but we don't have that cost sharing arrangement yet. But once we kind of settle on alignment, those will come into, those will come into focus quite a bit more.
Okay, and nothing we're doing tonight obligates us to that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Teresa?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move, let's see, what is it? The number?
2020-23 Resolution?
Yes, I would move approval of Resolution 2023 petitioning the Office of Railroad Commissioner for a potential upgrade to the rail crossing at Putman Parkway.
Is there a second? Teresa?
Yes.
She says seconding it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hey, that motion carries. Item number eight, discussion of possible action regarding the granting of a temporary grading easement at a utility and stormwater drainage easement.
So these easements are in relation to the Arthur Drive Storage Unit proposal that was approved last month by the Plan Commission and Common Council and ZBA. As part of their stormwater improvements, they need to grant us a temporary grading easement, which will exist for as long as those easements are necessary, or as long as work is being done. And then the utility and stormwater drainage easement, which is a perpetual easement, which provides us opportunities to access their, those facilities and have them access our facilities. Mark Langer probably has more detailed information on this than I do, but I think that's pretty much the gist of it.
Yeah, Phil covered most of it. The grading easement is for the site developer to do some grading work on the city property. Again, it's temporary, and it'll be restored. And the drainage easement, the permanent easement is for a stormwater improvement that will be on the city property, a small section of pipe that goes into the existing infiltration basin.
Okay, Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Phil?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Ryan?
Questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
Just a follow-up question. If they, Mark, if they don't return that property back to a satisfactory place or position after they do the temporary grading and all that, what are, what does the city do there?
Well, I think ultimately, they wouldn't be granted occupancy of their building or their sites, but other remedies would be probably within ordinance requirements.
But generally, people follow through what they do.
Yeah, this is a requirement as part of the site plan review that they, that they sign on this easement, or that they, that we provide, or we come to the agreement on the easements. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion to approve the granting of a temporary grading easement at the utility and stormwater drainage easement.
I'll say that.
And there's a motion by Linda and a second by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Muted.
Thank you. Discussion and action on a request made by Casey's Marketing Company for appointment of a new alcohol license agent.
So anytime a individual or a company, or I'm sorry, a company has a Class A license, they need to list a, an agent as the individual who's responsible for upholding those licenses. And in the case of this situation, Casey's is indicating that there is a new agent, Anthony Hawks would be replacing the Heidi Marseys, and has gone through all of the background check by the Milton Police Department and the city clerk. And based on that background check and the information provided from Casey's, staff recommends the council grant Casey's Marketing Company's request to appoint Anthony Hawks as the alcohol license agent for the Casey Store on the city's southwest side.
Larry, any questions or comments?
No, none at this time, thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
The new license agent for Casey?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number 10, discussion, presentation, or presentation, discussion, and possible direction regarding the Milton Fire Department's structure and funding scenarios. So the Fire Commission members have seen this presentation, and we wanted to make sure that members of the city council that are not on the Fire Commission have the opportunity to hear the same information. And you all were sent a packet regarding this. So when we meet with the town of Milton tomorrow, everybody is up to speed and on the same page. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to take action tonight as much as we want everybody to feel comfortable going into the discussion tomorrow night. So having said that, I'm going to turn this over to Dan, right? Dan?
He's not. He's muted.
Dan, are you going to unmute yourself? Howie, Howie can mute himself, and Dan can unmute himself.
There we go. Once I went to share screen, the buttons changed completely different. Plus, I got three screens. Everyone can see the presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this is going to be, and Chief Rhodes is on, on, on this call too. So similar to what we did a few weeks ago, there's absolutely nothing that changed in this presentation. This is the abridged version. So if you've got questions, I'll try to put breaking points in logical spots. But the Fire Commission directed the leadership department, or the leadership team of the Fire Department and Chief Rhodes and myself to, to cost out two scenarios, one of which is, was a consolidation with Janesville, and one was what standalone department might look like. And so scenario one includes 15 full-time firefighter paramedics, three lieutenants, utilizing our existing part-time battalion chiefs, and our full-time admin assistant. We included a allocation for equipment replacement, and then utilization of Janesville's management structure, and then just left the current budget for, in 2020, for operating supplies for like utilities, medical supplies, et cetera, at a flat $281,000, resulting in a budget of about $2.4 million with a required tax levy of just over $2.1 million. And then scenario two was a standalone department, which is a little more expensive because we have our own chief, our own captains, our own lieutenants, et cetera. And then there would be an estimated cost for HR, payroll, accounting services. So we estimate the budget at $2.7 million with a levy of just under $2.5 million. Are there any questions on those two scenarios, costs, et cetera, before we delve in further?
Dan?
Yep.
I, could you just kind of, for the sake of Devin and Ryan, could you kind of review what these positions are so that they understand? Or maybe the chief could do that.
Linda, what do you mean by positions?
Well, the captains, the lieutenants, you know, the difference between the deputy chiefs and the lieutenants and that sort of stuff, although maybe they don't, maybe they'll wait till the end.
I, I was just asking for clarification. It's, it's up to Dan and the chief if this is a good thing to talk about.
Ernie, do you want to take that one now, or should we take it at the end?
It, it makes no difference to me. We can, we can take it now if we need to.
Yeah, we'll just take it now because we're on those slides, because the rest of it's basically cost anyway, so.
So what we have here is, is I guess the captains who basically would function as 24-hour incident commander in charge of the fire station, basically after hours. They also would share duties either in training, as a training officer, or as a fire marshal, or as an EMS officer. The three full-time lieutenants would be assigned to the station to manage the engine company and the ambulance company. And then obviously, you would utilize the, the current fire battalions at Milton and the fire, the current command structure at City of Janesville too. And we would pull that all together to get some maximum efficiency and leverage in, in sharing, sharing these responsibilities. I hope I answered your question.
I have a question. Would we have our own fire chief with a standalone department?
Yeah, you would. Yes, ma'am, you would. I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, you would have your own fire chief and your own deputy chief. Mayor, thanks for the, the catch there. I thought it was the other scenario. Yeah, you would have your own fire chief and deputy chief. That is correct. My bad. Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
You were correct.
And then this was the consolidation, which is, I think what Chief Rhodes was talking about, the lieutenants would be the, kind of the shift commanders, if you will. Am I correct in saying that, Ernie?
Yeah, they would be in charge of the fire station.
Okay.
On their shift.
All right. So here's where we started to just talk about the nuts and bolts. This is all stuff that I think everyone knows, but the city and towns of Milton are 50% owners and contributors, which also means cost overruns and, and capital costs are split 50/50 with each jurisdiction. Then there's fixed annual contracts with the towns of Harmony, Johnstown, Lima, and Kashkana. And so when looking at the 2020 budget, we have about $250,000 in revenue, $1.16 million in expenses, for a levy of about $907,000. And based on the current 50/50 arrangement, the $907,000 is split out, and shown with the city and towns contributing about 43%, and the other townships contributing the other remaining 14%.
So Dan, that's our, our current budget that we're operating from this year?
For 2020. So there was a needed, needed contributions from all towns and owners of about $907,000.
I think it's also important to point out that, for example, town of Kashkana, the Milton Fire Department has primary responsibility for a very small portion of the town of Kashkana. So the amounts of dollars reflected here reflect the territory and properties served.
Very good point, Phil. Thank you. Any other comments and questions?
Dan, how did we determine what the allocations were going to be from the townships and the city and the town for this budget? What was the formula we used?
The city and town contribute 50%, and then there were some fixed contracts that were pre-negotiated with Harmony, Johnstown, Lima, and Kashkana. And this is, 2020 is the last year of those contracts. And I do not know the methodology for how those fixed contributions were derived. I think it's been one of those things that's been around for, for decades, and there's been small little increases of, you know, 1%, 2%, 3% or whatever each year for a number of years. And, and that has brought us to these various contributions, because no one seems to know what the methodology was for how they were derived.
So it's almost arbitrary?
Yeah, that'd be one way to say it.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
So then the, after the July 15th meeting, the, the first meeting when we discussed this with the commission, this is kind of where it stopped. We talked about the total cost for the two options. And then we were tasked with trying to come up with a, a methodology for, for cost sharing. So it wasn't just some arbitrary figure. So we explored equalized value, because that is how a majority of property taxes in the state of Wisconsin get allocated, mainly school districts, counties, and tech colleges. And a majority of the, of the formerly set up fire districts utilize equalized value when, when divvying up costs. So we looked at it from that methodology, because the amounts adjust every year by the Department of Revenue in August. And it's, and it's a representation of the value of property being protected within a service area. So that was the rationale for using equalized value. And then just for a historical standpoint, to, to show what the 2020 budget would have allocation would have looked like had we used the equalized values that the Department of Revenue cranked out last August. You can see that we, the City of Milton, would have been right around 37.5%, with the town of Milton at 31%, Harmony at 20%, Johnstown at just over 5.5%, Lima just under 4%, and Kashkana just under 2%. And then here is just a pie chart illustrating it, because I know sometimes pie charts are easier for people than tables. Is there any questions on that before I show what the over/under looks like on that? So this is the over/under showing that the City of Milton, under that methodology, over-contributed by $51,000, and the town of Milton over-contributed by about $110,000. Then you can see the contracted towns would have under-contributed when utilizing the equalized values. So then we took that same methodology and applied it to scenario one, which was the consolidation. And you can see we have the increase of 1.2 million... And you can see we have the increase of 1.2 million dollars that would be needed to fund this scenario. And the city would have been at about, would, would need to raise about 407,000, et cetera, down, down, down the line. Are there any questions on that before I show the standalone department? So scenario two, obviously that cost was much higher. So the increase that would be needed is that much higher. Then the next question is, how, how would we raise this? We know as a city, we would have to do a referendum. The townships, as long as their population is under 3,000, don't actually have to do a referendum. It can be approved at the annual town meeting or a special town meeting. And then this, this would be the timing for, for the city if we chose to do a referendum. So if we chose to do a referendum, say in April of 21, we would want to have the language for the referendum set by early January. So just as a matter of practical, we probably want that done before Christmas. And then if we chose to have the, the referendum in a, in an even year, so 2022, there is a lot more leeway because there are more elections. And we can always do a special referendum, but there are large associated costs with that too. And what we had told the fire commission, yeah, fire commission on July 30th is that in order to properly vet both of these options, in a perfect world, we would get some direction tomorrow night on which scenario to analyze in greater detail so we can ensure that all costs and other things, whether it's with Janesville or whether it's looking at wages around the area if we chose a standalone, to make sure that they're reasonable and, and that sort of thing to make sure costs are covered. And then these are just the action steps. Choose a scenario and then either merge command staff or hire a full-time fire chief. And then it's also important to note that under either scenario, there would still be a station located within the Milton Fire Department service area, including a new one at some point. So that's the end of the presentation. Are there any questions on anything before we open it up for discussion?
Yes, I have a question, Dan.
Yeah.
Is there a chance that some of the towns might decide to back out of the fire group?
I'm sure.
Because of equalizing value?
I'm sure that's entirely possible. Some might be harder than others, given their geographic area, but that is entirely possible. I know a couple of the townships were on the July 30th meeting. And they were a little shocked at some of the increases.
I bet they were. And if they were to back out, I assume whatever was going to be allocated towards them now gets reallocated towards the remainders.
Yes, and it would depend on who opts out. Perhaps Chief Rhodes wants to take this with me, but I think some of it would depend on what the exact service area would look like. You know, obviously like of Kashkana, they're a very, very small piece of the puzzle. So if they backed out, that, those costs would have to be absorbed. But if a larger player chose to go out or larger players chose to go out, that might change some of the staffing methodology, but I might be speaking out of turn. So I'll let Chief Rhodes answer that before I.
I think you hit it on the nail, Dan.
Okay.
But, but the data probably shows, Ryan, this is very, at least from my analysis, is they probably have gotten a pretty sweet deal for the last few years. And so the shock is even greater for them.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, it's going to be quite the shtick of shock, but they have been getting a pretty darn good deal. But if they're like us, they've probably been basically kind of tied on the budget, done other things and stuff, and now this is a large decrease coming out of nowhere.
I'll, I'll just go through everybody like I usually do and see if there are questions or comments.
Yeah, just in, in reply to Ryan, I think that they have gotten a nice deal, but they don't realize it. And so they would, they would be very taken aback to find out the difference in what it could really cost to their taxes.
And I think it's important to note that both of these scenarios are an enhanced service too. This isn't the status quo either.
Right.
Because this is, this is having a full-time professional department under either methodology that'll likely be more responsive than what we currently have.
We'll leave that.
Bill, any questions or comments?
Just my only comment in terms of the cost sharing is that, you know, even if there were a referendum and it failed, there's still contracts with those other townships. And the numbers that were put together demonstrate that we need to have some conversations with those other townships. Given the, the numbers, I would think that Beth and the town of Milton would be interested in having a conver, that conversation as well. You know, given the out of proportion part that Milton, city of Milton and town of Milton are paying.
Thanks, Bill. Lynda?
I was just going to say that historically, most of our townships have, you know, they kind of do the same thing that we do where you've got an election every two years. And if they're not somebody that's on that fire commission or public safety, they, they're not always keeping up with it until it's time to renew contracts. Harmony has always had, they've always had concerns about the price of their fire service, but Harmony's other choice, I believe, would be Janesville. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there. We, we do, we need to do a better job of educating all of our townships and town board and the whole public and administration on the ongoings.
Thanks, Lynda. Ryan?
Um, I guess one other question I have is if, say we go with equalized value, Harmony ends up paying 20% of whichever option we go, are they going to want to have somebody on the commission? I'm just kind of curious about that.
Well, yes, it's very possible to go to a different type of commission. We had talked about this as well. The type of commission that we currently have is different than what other fire districts have, in which case they would elect and it would be all public representatives rather than representatives from the township and the city council. It would be all just community members or, you know, it wouldn't be people that represent them as elected officials.
I never heard anything about that before.
A citizen board.
Citizen, yes, correct.
Yep.
And if we join with Janesville, we are not a board. Every would go through Janesville and that also in their fire commission are citizens.
Yes.
Okay. So I just, I wanted to let Chief Rhodes include some of his comments at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to just remind the council that we followed on the two options. We were charged by the commission to bring back two options to a subcommittee made up of Mr. Meyer and Council Roush. And so we did that. And in this process, we pulled the command staff together, Chief Parker, Chief Lucas, Chief Maury, and then Dan Nelson and his expertise with budgeting. And we designed these processes. We talked about many, many things. And at the end of the day, we decided these were the best options for the city and township of Milton. And so I wanted to remind of everybody of that process. We stuck to, we, we stuck to the process in that we're excited to continue on with the process as it, as it goes. So thank you.
Thanks. That's important for our members that are on the fire commission as well as the public to understand how inclusive this process was and how involved the fire commission was and the command staff. And the fire commission asked them to produce this product, this presentation, and they did it. And we appreciate all the time and effort that everybody that was on that subcommittee put into this. Devin, any questions or Ryan, do you have anything else? I'm sorry.
I wanted to add that I think it's really good options and a lot of good information put together. And I could see that it's a lot of hard work by many people to put it together. So it's nice to have nice, a couple of options to look at and it's, you know, gives us good things to think about.
Thank you. Devin, any questions or comments?
I, I just want to thank everyone that took time to, to put that together. It was really well put together. I think all my questions have been answered though.
Thanks, Devin. Larry?
Yeah, both scenarios address the issue of providing paid, full-time paid staff, which is what we need for this area for fire and medical protection. We just need it. We've got a population size and a 90 to 100 square mile area to serve. It's, it's come down to one of these two scenarios. And I'm, I'm going to come forward tonight and tell you that I support the consolidation scenario. Number one, it's physically more acceptable to all the participants, cost-wise, hopefully, and in a referendum we'll find that out. And number two, more importantly, it sets us into a better stage where regional fires and medical protection service down the road, which is what most areas of the country have gone through. And so I think it's time for Milton and the surrounding area to go to that place. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Does anybody else have a question that I, I've already asked? I'll give you an opportunity. It's not mandatory that you make any decision or take any vote tonight. We really just want to make sure that everybody, like I said before, has the same information. We're going to have our joint meeting with the town of Milton tomorrow and there may be a further discussion that takes place and we'll hear the town's thoughts on both of these options. So I just didn't want the, the council to feel like there was any pressure tonight because some, some of our members, this is the first time they've been able to discuss this, and I know that they, you know, been reading the material and thinking about the material. So anybody else, if you could just like raise your hand if there's one more comment or question you have? I see that Lynda has her hand raised.
One of the very important things that I just want to point out to everyone is that as a standalone station, we need to make sure that we can hire people and that people are interested in coming to our station. That's part of the problem that we have. We've done a lot of different things. The association, we joined up with a, a national support group that helps fire departments all around the country with recruitment. It's, that's part of our biggest problem is we just can't get people to come to Milton as an on-call. And so we made a lot of attempts to make sure that we were increasing benefits and that we were increasing payroll and, you know, working with, you know, Teresa and Brian worked diligently with the subcommittees and, and thank you for doing that, both of you. But the, it's the people. That is a major problem, but I don't want you to be really super alarmed about it because it's not only us, it's everybody that has this problem. And that's one of the reasons that I believe a lot of people are, might be leaning towards joining with Janesville because it's a better opportunity for hiring. Thank you.
And Dan, I don't, I'm going to put you on the spot, but you can, you can say that you don't have the numbers right now, but I believe each year we have increased our contribution to the fire department. I don't know what the percentages are, but I know each year we, our contribution and our investment has, has gone up.
From, from 2016 to 2020, both the city and town have contributed close to or if not just a hair over $100,000 more than we did in 2016. So that's increased somewhere between 20 to 30,000 dollars each year over the last four years.
So I think that the, the city and the town have increased their investment. We've tried to boost the, the budget to the best of our ability without asking for an operational referendum from our respective communities. And I also think it shows the dedication and support that the fire safety and health safety have in both of our communities, that we have increased that contribution significantly. It's significant for the size of a community of the city of Milton to increase that amount each year for the past four years. So I think that we've done the best that we can on behalf of our citizens. And we continue to have some struggles with paid-on-call, part-time staffing yet, it's not unique, like Lynda said, to us. It's something that is happening across the country. And Bill, I saw that you had your hand raised, I think?
Yeah, I just had two short comments. First one is, I, I think that this is a very, very good effort to have a true, honest, apples-to-apples kind of a comparison. And, you know, I thank Chief Rhodes for his participation. I didn't see or feel that there was any pressure in the direction of consolidation with Janesville. I think it was a, you know, a fair look at, at both of these models in terms of what would be necessary as far as staffing is concerned to create those, those budgets. The other thing I wanted to point out is for the citizens, they should know that right now they're safe, that, you know, there is coverage and we have dedicated people who are there. We have the best trained fire department we've ever had, especially in terms of the ENT service. And so people's property and their lives are, are as safe as they can be under current circumstances, I guess the best way to put it. However, what we've been learning over quite a number of months is that there are danger signs. And those danger signs say that the problem with staffing that was brought up is a real one and that it's only going to get worse and that, that coupled with population growth and adversity of kinds of properties to be covered. You know, we, we're talking about changes in our industrial park. You know, those. park. You know, those are properties that need fire coverage, too. And consequently, over time, this is going to become a more and more serious problem and needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Is there anybody else that has any comments or questions? I guess for right now, I'll leave it at where we're at. So we have an opportunity tomorrow night to listen to, you know, what the town has to say and what their perspective is. We are a 50-50 partner with them. So I don't know that we need to make a recommendation or if we really have enough information without having that joint meeting to make a recommendation tonight, unless there is some sense of urgency that somebody has to make a recommendation tonight and take a vote. Larry, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just have a concern that we, that we as a council should have some sense of what direction we're headed. Otherwise, we're going to have nine, 10 people with all kinds of opinions tomorrow night. You know, time is of the essence here in terms of the referendum process. The other thing I want to point out, and again, I've said this before, but I'll say it again, call time is very important to me. Call time, I'll repeat that, call time throughout the fire service area is very important to me. And our numbers are showing that call times are getting a little out there, like Bill said earlier. And when you're having a heart attack, you want to have somebody there and be there on time. And when your pulse is burning on the modern material, hultus today will up pretty quickly. I'm sure the tree could build on that and share that as well. So I'm just seeing, I'm real concerned that tomorrow night, we don't just circle around in the pond and never get out of the water. Thank you.
That's always a risk when we're 50-50 partners in something. It's not all about the city council and the city of Milton. Linda, you had a question or comment?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate us having this meeting and going over this because as a fire commissioner, it's sometimes I'm not sure that everybody actually understands what's going on because we each have, you know, other committees that we're doing, too. And this is something that I feel like the public is going to want us to know about and be able to answer. So, and I have to say that, you know, I'll repeat this as many times as I can, we have got a very dedicated group of people, but they deserve better than what we are giving them. They deserve to have a living wage. They deserve to have benefits. Their families should feel safer with what they're doing. They deserve to have the opportunity for advancement. We've lost some really good people in the past years as Milton has been a stepping stone. And I really just, it's a very sad thing. But I understand the love of the community and the building and the organization as it has been for the last 100 years. But we have to, we have to take care of the people that we represent. And that, to me, is what this is about. We need to make sure everybody is safe, and we also need to make sure that our firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics are safe.
Thanks, Linda. So are the Fire Commission meetings, have they been recorded, the ones that we've talked about this at?
Yes, all the last few Joint Fire Commission meetings that have been through Zoom, I've recorded them. And the latest ones, I did add to the city's YouTube channel as well.
Thank you. And I wanted to share with you, the reason I'm asking is because this is, you know, I feel like this is a momentous decision. And I want to make sure, as a city, we are giving our citizens, the members of our community, an opportunity to be heard. I know all of you have heard, when we've had different topics, that community members will say, "I just, I didn't know," or "I wasn't aware how fast this moved." And it doesn't mean that we haven't done an excellent job communicating. But on one hand, you know, time is of the essence. But on the other hand, I also want us to be very thoughtful and make sure that there isn't a question of whether we rush to a decision. So those are my thoughts. And I know that there's a timeline of, like, looking at maybe April 21st for, or April 2021 for a referendum. But I also, you know, want people to understand that we want to be intentional about when we have a referendum. And if our economy is not doing well as it is right now, then, you know, April might not be the best time to ask our citizens to give us more money. Or if the school district has a referendum and Blackhawk Technical College has a referendum, then maybe we're going to be asking too much of people if we then have a third referendum. So those are just all of the things that I think about when we're talking about, you know, how we move forward as a community with fire safety and our health safety and paramedics. So if everybody's okay, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is really what replaces our team building, discussion and possible action on the development of a 2020-2024 strategic plan.
So I sent an email out earlier today just with some notes from the employee focus group that met, and they discussed the mission, vision, and values. And I thought that would be the focus for this evening. So we can finalize that and then move on to developing goals, objectives, strategies, and actions at the September 1st meeting. So, can you all see the screen? Okay. So this is the preferred mission statement, I guess, from the employee focus group. It is based off of one that the common council had developed and then just tweaked slightly. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on it.
Looks good.
Good?
I think it's kind of come full circle for what we were intending to get to.
Okay.
I like it.
You like it, Bill?
I like it, too. Yeah, and I think Ryan was saying the same words at the same time.
Exactly. Yeah, I said it at the same time.
I know. We do strategic planning, and the structure of our meeting goes out the window. Everybody talks at once. You guys are fine. I'm just giving you a hard time.
I like it, too.
Okay. Well, that's good. I think we might have a mission statement, folks. This is the vision statement that I'd shared before, and then I just had some track changes from the comments from the employee focus group.
I like the changes. Makes sense.
Okay.
There isn't anything there about for future?
Like, because we took out this forward-thinking piece? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. I'm just thinking that, isn't there, is there someplace else where we can, you know, because we do think of future? Or, and maybe there's a better word?
I don't know if this is a place, and I can't see the values part of it, but we don't have anything about diversity or inclusion in here, in the vision. I know we do on the mission.
Yep.
And so I don't know if that, I don't know. I'm just asking.
You know, I tried to go through it, and I was trying to get rid of redundancy by changing some of the wording so that we didn't reuse all of the words. You know, I took out some of the ones that already are in all of these so that, you know, it just, it took up so much word space. I know what you're saying, but to me, if it's there once, it was plenty. You know, perhaps, but if you're asking for it to come again, perhaps we could find a different way of saying it, if you feel strongly about something, you know, something like diversity or something, we could, we could find another way to word it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it's important that we're reflective. We reflect the community that we represent. And I don't know where to go. And I agree about the redundancy. That was just my question.
Well, like, for example, on the first one, develop, you had develop and development. So I had changed it to, in my mind, in my sheet, develop a diverse tax base through residential growth, small business attraction, and retention, and industry expansion progress, all with smart growth in mind. So that you're not, you know, develop and development, you just get the wording. I don't know.
What about, instead of a diverse tax base, a resilient tax base?
Yes, that would, that would work, to me, as a reader, somebody that comes in, it keeps me interested in what I'm reading. Because the ideas in all of these are well-done. Everyone that's done them has chosen them well. Now they just need to be worded correctly.
I think one of the points with the word diverse was to get the idea of a mixed tax base in there. But I think it is accomplished with, you know, we mentioned residential, mentioned business, mentioned industry. And so I think the diverse happens because we spell it out.
Yes.
Did you have any other notes, Teresa?
Yes. No, I don't have good light. Can you send me some good light?
I'll find the sun for you. Send it your way.
Oh, okay. Under recruit, recruit and retain employees with a commitment to the community, comma, organizational skills, and endeavor for operational excellence.
My thought process with that one was a commitment to the community and the organization.
Oh, okay. I misread it. Okay.
So if I need some better punctuation or something in there, let me know, or word it differently.
Just put a comma after organization to break it, then. And...
I don't know, they need that other "and" after organization. Maybe that makes it read better. Recruit and retain employees with a commitment to the community and the organization who endeavor for operational excellence.
Okay, yes, that will change it.
I might...
It wasn't coming through to me.
I might choose strive instead of endeavor.
Okay.
It's a little more active.
I think, I think I chose endeavor because I'd put strive in the mission statement, but we've taken that out now. So I, I'm remembering that now. So thank you.
Yeah. But yeah, take out "and." The other thing that I had written down, okay, under values, you're probably not ready for those yet, but those...
Let's finish vision first.
Okay.
Did anyone have any other comments on these bullet points?
Do we want to say anything about, I'm looking at earn the community's trust. Do you want to say anything about, like, engagement, transparency, and communication?
Like that?
Yep.
Okay.
The note on chat.
Ah, it came down. Oh, educational was taken out from there because, oh gosh, what was the conversation? We were talking about how educational might confuse people more when they think that the city and the school district are the same thing or somehow linked. And the city doesn't necessarily have a lot of, I don't know, pull, I guess, in creating educational opportunities except through the library. So I think that was the conversation at the employee focus group level.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. What about changing to, like, learning opportunities?
Which bullet point?
It's the third.
Oh, yep, okay.
So recreational and, because learning opportunities, I think, outside the library, there's still ways to learn about things, like the Melton House.
And the planting in the furries.
Yeah, and like the Ice Age Trail, you learn all about that. So I don't, I don't want to forget the part that we're still teaching our community members new things.
Like that.
Yeah, based on the conversation we had, I think that that is an excellent compromise and learning. Because Inga's right, the conversation with the employee group was, well, why, we're not educators, why are we taking that on? You know, it'd be like the school district saying, and provide quality infrastructure or something like that. But I think Ashley's suggestion is a great compromise and one that is...
It's kind of, kind of an old-school term, but lifelong learning might be better.
Oh, I like lifelong learning because you guys teach me something every week.
Is that how I type lifelong learning with a hyphen?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I'm seeing some head nods, at least.
You need to be a lifelong learner. We're teaching you.
You're learning, Inga.
I am, learning every day. Okay. Anything else on the vision? Well, I think we might have a vision now, guys. We're moving right along. Okay, so values. Teresa, you had a comment on this part.
You know, you probably still need to discuss the words or the brainstorming, but just to point out, because I went through them, they all need to be either verbs or nouns because, you know, if you have consistent... Because, you know, if you have consistency or professionalism, just to keep those in context to what you're asking for in values.
Yeah. These were just my quick notes from the meeting and I didn't.
Right, no, no, but so that when we're thinking of them as we brainstorm, to keep them in the same context.
So what does the group think of these words, values that the employee focus group created, not created, selected?
I think they're nice. I like them.
I mean, we're, we're not going to have all of them. I think that's too many. If we, I think five is a nice number, but if we go more than that, then we can do that too.
You know, when you, when you look at going above and beyond, do you look at challenging or what exactly are you looking at in terms of going above and beyond? What were you talking about?
Um, some of the conversations were like, if someone calls and they want their property tax information, but they live in the town, then we'll, we'll check online, make sure that they live in the town of Milton, and then provide them that phone number, rather than just saying, sorry.
All right.
See ya.
Okay, that's not challenging, so.
Inga?
Yes.
When the belonging included, is it the concept inclusive?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I mean, that might be less wordy.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I wouldn't use both of those words. I, what would be nice is if there were, there were some words that maybe took into consideration a variety of these concepts.
Well, I was wondering about like integrity kind of encompasses fair, consistent, and honest, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, being a part of that conversation, I don't think anybody was particularly married to any specific word. It was a brainstorming session and words were kind of said, and Inga wrote them down. I would, I would agree that there is a lot of redundancy or duplicity, or, you know, if you were to create a Venn diagram of honesty, transparency, and integrity, there'd be a lot of overlap. Same with resourceful, responsive, knowledgeable, and going above and beyond. All of those words can really mean the same thing, especially given the context in which they were discussed during that meeting. So, yeah, I think that there's room for combining or choosing one word that is, everybody feels comfortable with.
So that L in taking off from that, then professional might include some of that verb. When you're professional, you're resourceful, you're responsive. Above and beyond. You're knowledgeable.
I would like something about inclusion.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
So talking about it, is it inclusion or inclusive? What's?
However, everybody thinks it should be.
Inclusive.
I think inclusive also, that means all of our work, no matter what your department is, no matter your position, you try to include the community in decision-making. You try to include the parties that are affected in the decision-making.
So Devin had commented about unprejudiced. Is that something that would be? Does inclusive cover being unprejudiced, or what do we think about that?
I think it covers.
Devin also said impartial, and I think that maybe fits under integrity. Is maybe the overarching word here professional?
I think that was what Larry was suggesting.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what I think.
Yep, didn't spell that right. There we go.
I have a question for the group here. I mean, we could have those main verbiage, the main verbs or nouns, depending on what trees pointed out, and still clarify those behind there with these other words.
Yeah, what, what I'm, what I'd like to do is pick the, the five kind of main words and then provide more context around them.
Wait, you know what I mean? Thank you.
Well, and I think transparency definitely needs to be in there.
So that leaves safety and security and fiscal responsibility as two concepts, I guess, that the employee focus group offered.
I like those.
I do too. I like fiscal responsibility.
Do you think respectful would fit under inclusive? Well, and it kind of fits here too.
Yep.
Could we include something about forward-thinking? Just kind of something about looking into the future a little bit?
Innovation, innovative, yes, yeah. Because we do have to be adaptable and innovative to grow as a community.
Yeah.
Is there a word we like most from this cluster?
I like innovative, but it's a little amorphous, depending on the perspective you're taking. You know, some people may say, well, government shouldn't be innovative by any means. They, you know, they're there to plow the streets and do whatnot, but I think that that's what Ashley was getting at, and I agree.
Well, we certainly had to be innovated when COVID hit. So I think we do have to be innovative and try to find practical solutions when problems arise to take care of our community.
And adaptable, like we so often do in public works.
Maybe the word is creative. Creative solution, creative focus.
It's not a bad idea because we have used innovative before. It kept up above, going with what Teresa said earlier.
Where's the thesaurus?
I already, I have it up right now. I do like creative because that kind of encompasses a lot of things, like the fun part of being creative, but also like solutions and everything.
Imaginative, inventive, resourceful. Yeah.
Original. I like original. Now, that's one of the things I've always said is we aren't Jamesville, we're Milton. You know, we're better.
Is seven too many, Inga?
Um, I'm pretty sure that Brene Brown said that two is how many values you should have. But, but I, but I think that might be too few.
We always said God gave us a clue.
Yeah, the five.
Yeah, like safety, go under fiscal responsibility, is that? Because it's safe to be responsible, but are they talking about safety as in like?
Safety, like, public safety, having a safe community, feeling safe in the community.
But maybe fiscal responsibility could go underneath integrity.
Or safety could go under professional.
Well, I think because one of the major responsibilities of municipal government is to provide for safety services, and it is a big part of our budget. So I do think safety, public safety, or safety-mindedness, I don't, I don't know. Like, I do think it needs to be separate though.
So.
I hate to lose fiscal responsibility as, as a value, though. I think that's a real good one as far as a message to the community. Broken out, going against my rule of five.
I think if, if you are to lose one, in my opinion, and not, you wouldn't lose it, it would just go underneath. Transparency is a byproduct of having integrity. If you have integrity and you are being consistent and honest and impartial, then you, then, then by default, you would be transparent. Otherwise, how would people know that you're being fair and consistent, honest and impartial? You would, they would know that by being able to see that you are those things.
I like that. I think that's, that's true. I think we can move that one.
I think I'm good with six. I think that kind of makes sense. I don't really want to break any of them more, or combine any more of them, I don't think.
It's a nice even number.
One, one thing we did talk a little bit about at a previous meeting, this goes back to Brene Brown. She talks about operationalizing the values into observable and teachable behaviors. So if we talk to our employees, we expect their values to be safety. I don't know if that necessarily works as a value for the organization. Does that make sense?
They have to be as thinking safe. So the street, people need to think, keep the streets, the streets safe. The department needs to think about keeping homes safe and businesses safe. The AMS people have to think about health and safety.
Did we have anything under safety in our vision? Was there anything that hinted in the vision?
Yeah, superior public safety services.
Well, that's fine.
And it's in the mission statement.
And it's there.
Yep, a safe.
I, I think we can lose it in the, the values and, and be okay.
And based on what Larry was just explaining, I think that, that could go under professional. Or safety, safe? Yeah.
Well, I think it goes two ways too. We want our employees to practice safe behavior. If you're in a confined space, you're using, you're, you're using your training. You're going to training, you're understanding, you know, how it is to operate a chainsaw in a safe way. If you're at City Hall, you, you know, we, we practice safety by always having at least two people present at all times. So there's that aspect of employee safety. And then there's the other aspect of community safety, which is probably the more traditional approach that police and fire exhibit, as well as public works when plowing the streets and making sure that the water is safe to drink. So there's multiple facets of safety, but I agree with you that it all comes down to being a professional. We are, you know, professionalism is probably one of the most important things that I want to, you know, see in the organization. And what we just described are all those things. If you're a professional, you're doing your job safely. You know, you're not, you're not cutting corners, you're not trying to do things too fast and put yourself or your coworkers or community members in danger. So I can see that it would fall under there, both as a internal level of safety as well as a public level of safety. We have a professional police department, we're Wile E. G. accredited. That's a profession, that, that literally is a professional designation that our police department has. So, you know, perhaps I'm already saying things that everybody agreed with anyways, but I, I think it fits, and it doesn't diminish it as, as, as something that we hold to be important.
Do we want it to speak professionalism?
What about knowledge under professionalism? Is that how we want that to be? Able or knowledge?
If I can spell it right. Shouldn't have taken that E out. Um, yeah, and the, these are just like key words from the conversation. And then, like I said, I'll, I'll expand on them with a little bit more context. And then I'll bring that back to the council for a final review too. And I'll probably send it to the employee group as well.
Looks good.
Yep.
Well, that was easy.
They did really good.
I can stop my screen share now.
Yeah, they did. There were some that were, you know, unsure as to what, what their role. You know, they, they felt comfortable with the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. But then when we started talking about values and mission statements and goals, you know, that seemed to be too, you know, ambiguous to them or too, too, you know, just they, they didn't, they didn't feel like they really had much to, much to, to give to that conversation. But then when we had it, they did. And, and, you know, it was, it was a good exercise, I think, to go through with those who participated. And as you would expect, you know, at first, we couldn't get anybody to speak. And then by the end of it, everybody had spoken multiple times. So I think it was a good exercise and, you know, there was a level of, of ownership and investment in it in the end. So I think it's important.
Yeah, I'm, I'm so glad that we're doing this, like for, you know, with the community, the employees, with us, I just, I think it's an excellent exercise. And it really hasn't been as painful as I thought it might be. It's really been enjoyable. I've liked it a lot, and I appreciate all the work Inga and all the staff have put into it.
Yeah, well, Inga has put so much work into it. She has made it easy for us to take part in those exercises. We're not, you know, she's created a framework that we are filling in the blanks. We're not trying to create the framework and then fill in the blanks. So she deserves all the credit for that. She's done a great, a tremendous job of guiding this conversation in a productive way. And in, in a, in a non-judgmental, you know, in an impartial way too. It hasn't been, these are the things that Inga believes in. Now tell me you agree with me. So, whoop. Ryan just brought our youngest member.
So.
Wasn't meaning to distract, but I had taken from it.
So just quick for next steps. I have the report done with the, all the data for the strengths, issues, and challenges data gathering phase that we went through previously. I just want to meet with the department head team before I release that to everybody, just to make sure everyone's on the same page and understands the different aspects of that. So then if there are questions from the council or the community, then we're a little bit better prepared to answer those. So I am hoping to meet with the department head team either Monday or Tuesday next week. And then after that, I'll release the report to all of you to take a look at. And I'll probably also send you some chapters to review from, from the book as well, so we can be prepared for the next discussion on September 1st, when we'll be starting to develop the goals.
See, Ashley, look at all the learning that's taking place here.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Can we add to what you have put together before you have that meeting? Because there were some things that I thought about afterwards that I wanted to add. Is that possible, Inga?
The, for the strengths, issues, challenges report? Yeah, if you want to email me some comments, then I'll take a look at them and see how they might fit into that report. Basically, what I did was I tried to pull out the most common themes that we were hearing from the community workshop, the survey, the employee focus group, the council, and the department head team.
Right.
Okay, Inga, are we good to go to the next item?
I think so.
All right. Committee reports. Who has a committee report? Linda?
I don't have a committee report, but I have a general item. I have a request.
Okay, can we do committee reports first? Okay. Okay. I mean, maybe we don't have any committee reports and we'll write to Linda's general item.
Devin raised his hand.
There you are, Devin.
Parks and Rec met last night, just kind of discussed some art installation in these pollinator gardens, story gardens. Also talked about Arbor Day in the city of Milton. They decided on September 19th.
Yeah, so.
Be some sort of activity on September 19th?
So do you want me to explain that?
Yeah, if you want to go in a little more detail.
Yeah, so, um, because Arbor Day was in the midst of, of the beginning of COVID-19 pandemic time, we decided to delay Milton's celebration of Arbor Day. So we're going to celebrate it on September 19th and there's some trees that still need to be planted at Veterans Park. So we thought that might be a good activity for the commission and anyone else that might be interested to join as well.
Okay, Devin, anything else? Thanks. Any other committee reports?
Um, one more thing for Parks and Recreation Commission. We are officially starting the community engagement portion of developing the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. I'm going to be setting up some social media posts to promote a survey that we're doing for that plan. I'm hoping that there isn't much community confusion about the strategic plan and the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, but I'm sure that there will be. So just be prepared for those questions. We're going to have a public input meeting on September 10th at 6:00 PM. So the plan for that will be to do just a general overview of the park system and then give community members an opportunity to comment on any upgrades, changes, fixes that they're looking for at the parks. The plan is to have the plan done by October 20th as well, along with the strategic plan. The benefit of having the outdoor recreation plan is that it opens us, opens us up to be able to apply for additional grants, especially through the state, through the DNR.
So I wonder if we could just do like a press release to the courier or something so
Yeah.
people understand. It's just all part of community engagement and we're just on a roll. Anything else for committees? Okay, Linda, you want to do your general item?
Um, I, I just wanted to remind everyone that might be watching to be sure to support our local businesses and restaurants. This COVID thing has been really challenging for all of them and, you know, they, they need to have our support in order for them to stay in business. But the other thing that I wanted to request is that we take another look at our zones for at-home businesses. I kind of feel like we, there are some that because of all of this confusion, that maybe it would be beneficial for them or if we had more options for them to be doing just small businesses at home, one or two customer type stuff. So I would just like to have that on the next agenda.
Is that something Alec Community, the CDA would be part of or no?
So home businesses, it's not based on a zoning classification. So, you know, obviously you would need to be in a residential zone district to want a home business. But anybody is eligible for a home business, so it, it's a conditional use process or a, a request. So their business would need to meet the criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinances. So what we could do is, is put together kind of an outline of what that looks like. You know, we just issued one earlier this year or late last year for Amanda Miller's Bakery. You know, that would be, that would be an example of one that we've done pretty recently. And, but like Mary Ann Knutson requested one and she was already eligible for, for hers. So it's, it's a, it's just like our conditional use permit process. So we can maybe outline what that is and what the requirements are and then have a conversation. And if there's some consensus among the, amongst the council that some of those criteria should change or be looked at differently, then we can do that. Maybe that'd be a good place to start. That'd be my suggestion.
Okay. Staff reports. Mark, Mark E., Howie, what do you got?
Jansel Street, construction started today. They're all be closed to traffic. There's a detour route set up. We did have some questions from some of the residents about traffic control. Talked to the contractor, made some adjustments to some of his signage. Hopefully that's taken care of. The chip ceiling project's underway as well. That will be completed in then, at the end of August or by the end of August. And we have a concrete pavement repair project that we're working on getting some pricing for, for some work potentially on Madison Avenue.
What about that big hole in Highway 15 or Janesville Street by the stoplight?
That, that's also one of the areas we're getting prices for, so. Madison Avenue and Jansel Street.
Howie?
Mark, I appreciate how quiet it's been in front of my house.
Yeah.
Oh, they're also doing some water valve, going to do some hydrant repairs and I think Mark's going to get some valve, water valve replacement prices too. And then also we're just cutting, we're still cutting dead trees and putting in, they're finishing up on the sidewalk projects, so.
Okay, um, Chief Mark Ward.
I have the opportunity to spend the day today with some really passionate people who kind of share my interest in employee wellness and public safety professionals and others who see some pretty awful things sometimes in their career. And so we had some kind of a countywide peer support training meeting today, primarily attended by Rock County Human Services and Janesville Police Department. And went through some, some pretty awesome stuff with them and looking forward to collaborating even more in the future. Rock County has received a grant that will help fund a position and other initiatives focusing on peer support. So we're hopefully going to be expanding that kind of program even more widely. Hoping to bring in school districts and other municipalities who currently don't have similar programs, start working more collaboratively with organizations and, and cities that already have programs, but we aren't yet connected together. Getting pretty excited about the work that we're doing to, to keep our employees' mental health and wellness in mind and look forward to hearing more about that.
Thanks. I think I'd argue people that were there today.
I have a list. We have lots of good things happening lately. Our food truck rally is on Sunday, August 30th from 10 to 2. So there are going to be six trucks scattered around the east side of town. We'll also have punch cards. So if you buy from three out of six trucks, you're put into a drawing for a prize basket featuring goodies from local businesses. So that's pretty exciting. We have our map on our Facebook page of where all the trucks are going to be. We have relaunched our Friends of the Milton Public Library. I'm very excited about this. So they will kind of help support the library with some programming and services down the road. We have a membership drive going right now. So if you want to support the library through a small donation on a, on a yearly basis, that'd be great. They've already awarded a scholarship to a high school student and they purchased a online tutoring program called Brain Fuse that we just launched as well. Our annual fun run, the library wolf went virtual, kind of sad, but it's the best thing to do. So you can run or walk a 5K between September 27th and October 4th and the money will go towards team programming. A new butterfly mosaic is going to be installed at the library on Thursday around 6 o'clock. I don't know if you saw the pictures on Facebook, but it's beautiful and I'm very excited to have that. And then we had 19 applications for our new job posting and we'll start interviews next week.
Great, we can never keep up with the library. Dan, anything?
I don't have anything.
Thank you for letting us know that. Inga?
I don't have anything.
Al, are you still at home?
I am home now. I just got back this afternoon. So I'm back, so I'll catch up. And which I kind of did a little bit earlier today, so it doesn't look like anything's too crazy happened while I was gone, which is good. I'm thankful for that, so.
We're all here. We're all still here. And it was, we didn't have hardly any emails either.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, really? I said how much I love you guys. Does anybody have anything else? All right, so, you know, we like each other so much. We're all going to get together tomorrow. And that will be a joint board, city council, Milton City Council and Town of Milton. And is that at 6 o'clock too?
Yes.
And it will be by Zoom. And I don't think I have anything else. Y'all got the agenda? And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And Linda's seconding it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It was good to see everybody. I will see you all tomorrow night.